When you go to Kensington, you're not going to see a beautiful picture. You're going to see drug addicts, you're going to see prostitutes, you're going to see needles, people laying on the street homeless, and you're going to see people even injecting themselves with drugs, getting their high on.
People know that they can come into Kensington and find what they're looking for if they're looking for potent opioids.
It's unbelievable to me to see where it's gone and how many people are just living right in the open, copping, shooting dope, living that life. It's mind-boggling, but it's gotten worse.
I think Kensington is a culture shock to come into.
Kensington has the worst problem I think of any neighborhood in the country. I mean, it's being called the Walmart of heroin.
It's an open-air drug market. That means you can sell drugs right out in the open, right on the street, right in broad daylight at the busiest intersection.
Drugs on every corner. I mean, you don't have to do much but just act.
They come from all over, as far as fucking Ohio. They come down to Somerset, and they get trapped down here, and all of a sudden, they're Kenzo's. No, they're not Kenzo's. They're your children.
Philadelphia unfortunately is leading the nation in opioid overdoses with more than 1,000 people dying every year in the city.
This epidemic is long in duration. It's getting more intense, so you're seeing crimes all derive from this opioid addiction. It's making the crack epidemic of the late 1980s seem almost insignificant.
A lot of people, when they go home at night, they close the doors, close the curtains, and that's it. Whatever happens outside after hours is what happens.
The Philadelphia Police Department has done a great job of reducing violence, but now you see the peak of these overdose deaths. They're not dying from being shot, they're dying from shooting up.
I'm tired of singing the same thing over and over again. We got addicts up and down our street, we got children who sing this stuff over and over again.
The game has changed, and things need to change to stop these deaths. Because fentanyl's on the street, it's killing our young people, old people, it doesn't matter.
I don't really understand how communities in the United States are allowed, you know, to have such poverty, such despair, such human sadness.
We're losing that war on drugs. These are real people's lives that are dying every day, and they're not in Afghanistan, they're not in Iraq, they're not in countries where we're at war or conflicts are going on. So why is it okay for them to die with no help? These are questions that people gotta start asking, the public's gotta start asking.
Hello, thank you for coming. My name is John Ratchudi. My partner Jill Freshy and I co-produced that two Emmy nomination documentary. It's actually 59 minutes. Everything you saw in there was actual, there was no Google research for any of the film. We worked on it for 13 months. One of the key factors in there to me, one of the most impactful things, and it's part of the reason why we're here, is because when Richie Antipuna says, "They're coming from all over," they think they're Kenzo's. They're not our kids, they're your kids. And all those kids out there, none of ours, all of Isaiah, they started somewhere. And I think the object of tonight's town hall meeting is to bring out the concern, the real concern for opiates and any of the opiate products that can addict a young child. Jill?
I would just like to add that, you know, we're all here, and in the film, the song has changed, and it's not going to change unless we stand up and do something about it. So I think that, you know, we need to make the change. We can't let just people open stores and hand out candy to children and get them addicted. So at the end of the evening, you know, we'll hand out things that we can actually do to maybe change the tides a little bit.
Before I make some further introductions, I want to bring in Father Joseph from St. Mary's Episcopal Church, who helped sponsor this event.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Father Joseph Smith of St. Mary's Episcopal Church, and it is right across the street. I do have some things that I'd like to say, and I see some parishioners here. I promise you it'll be shorter than a sermon, just a little bit. We look at a video like this, and we look at Wayne, it's Kensington, it's 13 miles that way, that's not our town, could never be our town. I think of the life that I grew up, upper-middle class, and none of us thinks that the addict could be one of us, someone we love, someone we're close to, until you watch your brother go through this. He was not addicted to heroin or anything like that, but he was addicted to marijuana as his gateway drug of choice. He's 55 now, but he's still alive. He has been addicted to many things all his life, and he's all alone. He had people in his life that come and go, and his destructive habits isolated everything because the only thing that was important to him was the next fix. It got so bad in our house that we had to change the locks because he was stealing things from the house, going down to the pawn shop, not even knowing where he is or what he's doing. Confronted with pawn tickets, he says, "That wasn't me." But he got us the next fix. And the family, we were probably the classic enablers, right? Upper-middle class will keep him out of trouble. When he gets in jail, we go bail him out. He's now in West Virginia. He's really a prisoner of the state, but not in a prison. Life is caught up with him. He has many, many health problems. And West Virginia provides a lot of medical help. He's from South Carolina. South Carolina is not doing that. He tried to move back home, and all of his prescriptions for the drugs that he needs to keep him alive are not available. Recently, my mother died, and he calls me up and he says, "Joseph, I need you to be my medical power attorney, because with all these things wrong with me, I don't want to linger. I need somebody who I know will do the right thing that I want them to do." Which means when something takes its... I'm just waiting for the phone call for the day when I have to make that decision. So there is a family cost, and there's a cost to society. But we're all here about something a little bit closer to home. What is kratom, Delta-8? I'm actually not going to go into that or speak to it because everything that I know, I've Googled, and I'm sure you've Googled as well, and it's all over the internet. We've been sending it to each other. The results of those searches, though, are strong statements by the DEA, the FDA, the National Institute on Drug Abuse, and the Mayo Clinic. Look them up if you haven't already. You know, the part, part of me is amazed that we're even here having this kind of conversation. There was a time when communities seemed to have values. There was a time when anything didn't go and standards of decency were naturally known and adhered to. But today, in our litigious world, where we're all too afraid of being sued, it seems that if you have the right amount of money, standards of decency can be bought. It's clear that CBD Kratom knew exactly what they were doing. Contractors who did the work on the old Starbucks building knew that they had their permits pulled. There need to be consequences. The folks who did the signage knew that they didn't have the right permits. There better be consequences. These people thought that they could just ask for forgiveness rather than permission. Pay the fine and then make up a cost through all the free advertising we, the outraged public, are giving them through radio shows, newspaper articles, and television reporters. I used to own a small business. That kind of advertising is priceless. Small businesses can't afford that. But their business model is to get the public outraged and have us do all their work, and it's working brilliantly. I think CBD Kratom knew all this, and I think their experience also told them the public apathy would soon win the day. It's someone else's fight. I'm too busy. My children have grown up. And they also knew that the confusion between kratom and Delta-8 products, over and against the medical marijuana, conflating all that together is to their advantage, and they took full advantage of that. And with that being said, at their 50th store, they also knew damn well that their irresponsible marketing methods, the names of their products as well as their delivery system, like gummies and chocolate bars and mollypops, and of course, my favorite is the Oregon Trail CBD Delta-8 product known as Girl Scout Cookies. They knew full well that they were marketing to the kids at St. Catherine's School, at Radnor Middle School, at Cabrini, at Eastern, the Valley Forge Military Academy. They knew what they were doing. They had the research. What are we even talking about here? A spokesman for CBD Kratom was on the Don Giorgoni Show earlier this week, and his big pitch was that the company wanted to come in here and be our partners. They wanted a partnership with the community. They wanted to lead the discussion, educate the public of the benefits of Kratom. Well, excuse me, that seems a lot like the fox in the hen house to me. As appalling as this next statement sounds, it would be akin to slave owners in 1840s, educating the public of the benefits and the virtues of slavery as an institution. Why in the world would we have them educate us on the benefits of Kratom? The bottom line is, at CBD Kratom, whoever those people really are, we don't want you as our partner here in Radnor. We are unified around this fact. Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, Green Party, and anything in between, conservatives, liberals, progressives, we do not want CBD Kratom and the old Starbucks between two schools and two churches. And now that you've got us mad, now that we're paying attention, now that we know what Kratom and Delta-8 are, we're here to fight you well beyond Radnor. We don't want this drug in our township, and we don't want it in our state. It's embarrassing, to say the least, that representatives of our Commonwealth have the opportunity to join Alabama, Arkansas, Indiana, Tennessee, Vermont, and Wisconsin, and the District of Columbia in banning Kratom. Are their politicians smarter than ours? Not hardly. It's just that our politicians chose money from a well-organized, well-funded Kratom lobby rather than their... rather than us. If there are any of those politicians here, if there are any of them listening, I have a message for you. It's time for you to stop taking money for the Kratom lobbyists. It's time for you to stop selling your soul to get re-elected. Some things in life are more important. It's time for you to represent your own people, not the lobbyists. It's time for you to do the right thing.
We also want to thank the Radnor Commissioners who enabled us to produce this town hall meeting. Maggie Myers in Ward 2, Anna Marie Jones in Ward 3, Lisa Borowski in Ward 4, Sean Farkey in Ward 5, and Jake Abel in Ward 6. We really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to present this town hall. At this time, I also want to, I'd like to thank the representatives, Chris Quinn, I don't know if Chris is here, Jennifer O'Meara and...
I'd like to thank Jill and John for the opportunity to speak with you briefly. I can see that they've made the order of the panel according to the principle of age and form beauty. A couple of definitions are always good to start. Tolerance is a pretty easy concept. Higher doses are needed to achieve the same effect. Withdrawal, on the other hand, is a characteristic syndrome, characteristic for the drug of abuse, which begins within 24 hours of the last use of the drug. The symptoms are the opposite of the acute effects of the drug. Dependence is a concept from pharmacology, and it's defined by the presence of withdrawal and tolerance. But dependence is not addiction. Addiction is a little like pornography, hard to define, but we know it when we see it. And here's a fairly good definition because it encapsulates the problem that there is this chronic compulsive daily use of the drug that directly causes all of these adverse effects in the person's daily life, in medical, legal, interpersonal, occupational spheres of life. So the person has all kinds of difficulties, but continues the daily use in spite of those difficulties. So there's tolerance and withdrawal, of course. There's more use than intended, craving for the substance. Craving is this psychological state in which there is nearly an irresistible urge to use the drug again. There are unsuccessful efforts to cut down. The person spends excessive amounts of time in acquiring the drug, and activities are given up because of use, and there's, most importantly, failure to fulfill major life obligations. There's recurrent use in hazardous situations such as driving or operating machinery, and there's continued use despite social or interpersonal problems. So this brings us to what has caused us to assemble here tonight. So Kratom is a plant that grows in Southeast Asia, that's its natural habitat, and there are many components to Kratom, but the one that is thought to be most important and most active is shown here on this slide, mitrogyny. Pay attention to the structure because there'll be a quiz after. Can I move to the next slide? So mitrogyny binds to the brain's mu-opioid receptors. Now, mu-opioid receptors are proteins that sit on the surface of our nerve cells, and morphine and our endogenous opioids like ketolins and endorphins bind to that mu-opioid receptor. An important point to remember here is that Kratom or MG, mitrogyny, binds that mu-opioid receptor much less avidly than morphine or our own endogenous opioids. So it produces less analgesic and less euphoria compared to morphine. But these facts have helped us to understand why many people have been using Kratom and MG to treat their opioid withdrawal symptoms and to provide relief from chronic pain. So small doses of Kratom can act as a mild stimulant while larger doses have some sedative Unfortunately, as a natural product, though, regulation of Kratom is beyond the purview of the FDA unless Congress acts to specifically authorize the FDA to regulate it. And they've only done that once before, and that's for nicotine. And they did that about five years ago. Congress passed an act that required the FDA to regulate nicotine-containing products. They could do the same for Kratom. So it should come as no surprise that Kratom use has increased because we're in the midst of this terrible opioid epidemic, which has been made so much worse by the social stress and isolation of COVID. Unfortunately, people with opioid use disorder turned to Kratom to treat opioid withdrawal symptoms, and people with chronic pain, who have found that it's more difficult to get opioids regularly from a physician to treat the chronic pain, have turned to Kratom for some degree of pain relief. But people are also using it to treat their own depression, anxiety, and other disorders as well. The important point for us to remember is that there are no valid human studies, no matter what you hear from individuals selling Kratom, that demonstrate efficacy and usefulness for the treatment of these disorders by Kratom. So to complicate matters, while there are many overdose deaths described in the literature in which Kratom was a component of what the toxicologist detected in the decedent's body, it has been difficult because there have been multiple dangerous substances to attribute the death to Kratom. Now Attorney Dourid has informed me that the case in which he represented the decedent is unique in that Kratom was the only compound found by the toxicologist in this unfortunate young man's body. There are many reports similarly about Kratom use disorder using those same 11 criteria that we just walked through, and there are clear descriptions of Kratom withdrawal symptoms, which, remember, are going to be the exact opposite of the acute effect of the drug. So now let's turn our attention to Delta-8. Delta-8 tetrahydrocannabinol, or TH, Delta-8 THC, is a very minor euphorogenic, meaning high-producing, compound found in marijuana. The closely related substance, Delta-9 THC, is the major component of marijuana that causes the euphoria. So you can see their structures here on this slide, and finding the difference between Delta-8 and Delta-9 is a little bit like solving a Where's Waldo puzzle. But the difference is subtle, but the same principle that the FDA cannot regulate Delta-8 THC as a natural product applies here. So Delta-8 produces similar effects to Delta-9 in terms of use. It produces relaxation, sedation, et cetera. It has about half the potency of Delta-9, but it's present in such small amounts in marijuana that people making Delta-8 commercially don't just extract it from marijuana, they produce it semi-synthetically by heating this third compound, which I've shown here on the slide, cannabidiol, with acid and a solvent such as toluene. So the sale and distribution of Delta-8 through these retail outlets, the internet and the mail, may be legal depending upon a particular interpretation of, believe it or not, the Farm Bill passed in 2018 by our Congress and signed by the President. But unfortunately, because of this lack of regulation, there are no limits on purity or safety. So purity is a major concern because of how Delta-8 is produced, heating it with acid and toluene to produce Delta-8 THC. And so a study was carefully done, looking at 27 products across 11 brands of Delta-8 that are sold across the country. And in none of these 27 products was there sufficient purity that the toxicologists were not concerned. Unfortunately, the market for Delta-8 products is concentrated in those states that do not permit recreational marijuana use. Because clearly, in those states that do permit recreational marijuana use, people are using recreational marijuana, they're not buying Delta-8 because it's more expensive to produce. So these are some facts about Kratom and Delta-8 that you can take with you as you try to decide what to do about the current situation, and I thank you for your attention.
Samuel Dourid is an attorney who represented someone who lost a founding member.
Great. So I first learned what Kratom was back in 2018, when a healthy 25-year-old named Caleb Sturgis took too much of it, suffered a cardiac arrest while he was driving to work, and died. Caleb's family came to our firm and they asked us to represent them in a lawsuit against the distributor that had sold the Kratom to Caleb. Now, at the time, we knew relatively little about Kratom, other than the fact that it was marketed and sold... was marketed and sold as an herbal supplement and that it had killed a 25-year-old. When the family came into our office, they brought with them the empty packages and bags of kratom that they found in Caleb's room. They laid them out on the conference room table. And Bob Mangalusi and I were shocked to see that none of the packages had any warnings, any dosage instructions, any product safety information whatsoever. The packages had the company branding on them, the amount in the package, and a general statement to keep away from children. So we immediately recognized it as a potential product liability case. Just very quickly, under Pennsylvania law and the law of many states in the country, a product can be deemed dangerously defective if it does not come with it all of the warnings, instructions for use, and guidelines necessary to use that product safely. Now, as you heard from the doctor, there are threshold issues of whether or not kratom can be used safely at all in any quantity. And no matter what kratom sellers tell you, there is not a single study out there, peer review study, demonstrating that kratom is safe to use. So even ignoring that for a moment and assuming that there is some safe use, it is incumbent on the manufacturers and the distributors to give users and consumers the information they need to protect themselves. So we took the case and we started doing a little bit more research about kratom. And every single fact that I found made me become more and more concerned. As you heard, the use of kratom in the U.S. kind of exploded in the mid to early 2010s. Calls to the CDC Poison Control Center went way up, ER visits went way up, and the number of deaths attributed to kratom or related to kratom also went up. So when the FDA and the DEA found out that kratom was being imported into the U.S. in bulk quantities, they announced an intention to classify it as a Schedule I, the same as heroin, amphetamine, cocaine, substances like that. And when they made this announcement, they were met with an enormous backlash of opposition from the pro-kratom community that was largely organized by the American Kratom Association, which is by far and away the largest and most active pro-kratom group in the U.S. So when they were met with this backlash, the DEA and the FDA took a step back and they said, okay, we're not going to classify it. We think that there needs to be more research, and we'll revisit this down the road. Well, now we're a number of years later, and it's still completely unregulated. And one of the dangers associated with that is that because it is unregulated, there is no industry-wide consensus or standards regarding the kind of information that has to be provided with kratom. And again, the threshold issue is that the kratom industry itself doesn't know how to advise its consumers and its users about how to use it safely because they don't know. And I think that it's important to read what the FDA has said about kratom, even though they haven't regulated it, because their stance is incredibly strong against kratom. The U.S. FDA has said that they warn consumers not to use kratom, and that the FDA is concerned that kratom, which affects the same opioid brain receptors of morphine, appears to have properties that expose users to the risks of addiction, abuse, and dependence. They have said that there are no FDA-approved uses for kratom, and the agency has received concerning reports about the safety of kratom. And so the fact that this is widely available to anybody that wants to go online with a credit card and they can buy it with no warnings whatsoever is extremely concerning. So in our litigation, we learned a little bit more that made us even more concerned. We learned that the lack of safety information is not isolated to a few bad companies or a few bad actors, but is an industry-wide systemic issue. And there's a couple of more sinister reasons, I think, as to why there is no safety information provided with these products. First and foremost is that when people see a product that has no safety information whatsoever, they assume that it's safe. There's a false sense of security there, and that's exactly what I believe the kratom industry is looking for. Because one of their main messages that you're going to hear over and over again is that kratom can't kill you, kratom is completely safe. And that's one of the reasons why Caleb Sturgis's case was so concerning to the pro-kratom industry. It was one of the first times when somebody died with nothing but kratom in their system. Every other case the pro-kratom community has pointed to other substances in the person's system, whether they were illicit or not, they would point to heart medication, would point to antidepressants, and say that it couldn't have been the kratom, it must have been this. So Caleb's case was terrifying for the industry. But another thing we learned through the depositions of the owners and the operators of the company was that they didn't want to warn consumers because they were trying to shift the responsibility about how to use, about learning how to use the product safely away from the manufacturers and distributors and onto the consumers. They told us that it was the consumer's responsibility to do their own research and find out how to use it safely for themselves. They described the process of learning how to use kratom as a trial and error process until you find out, you know, how much you have to take to get the desired effects. It's safe to say that under Pennsylvania law and under the law of many states, that's not how it works. It is incumbent on the manufacturers and the distributors of these products to provide the information that consumers need to protect themselves and to make educated and informed decisions. So we were ultimately able to establish in our case that the kratom that was sold to and killed Caleb Sturgis was defective on the law, both due to the fact that it lacked any kind of warning or product safety information at all, but also due to the fact that nobody would ever expect that an herbal supplement sold without warnings could kill you, but that's exactly what it did to Caleb. And Caleb's family is extremely outspoken, and they have been meeting with representatives around the state, around the country, to try to open people's eyes to what this substance can do. Now, there are certain states in the U.S. that have criminalized kratom possession. There's about six plus DC. But you have on the other end of the spectrum, four states that have adopted legislation that was pushed by the American Kratom Association, which allows some sort of weak regulations such as age limits, but it explicitly prevents the banning of kratom. And then you have all the other states like Pennsylvania that have no laws on it whatsoever. And so you have this environment where literally anybody can go online, go into a store in states like Pennsylvania and purchase kratom, and it comes with no warnings. Now, before I came today, I had the opportunity to go onto CBD Kratom's website, and I saw a shocking parallel between their website and the website of the manufacturer that we see. There is no product safety information whatsoever. And so whether or not adults want to make educated decisions to take certain substances, that's fine, but they need to be given the information in order to do that. But what's not fine is that the stuff is being marketed and sold to children. Regardless of whether or not it comes with safety information, the threshold issue of can it be taken safe at all, until that's answered, there's no place for that in this community or in any community. And so what I brought with me today is actually the expert toxicologist report from our litigation. It's public record, it's on the Philadelphia docket. But anybody that wants a copy is free to take one. I clearly did not bring enough, but if you want one, you can email me and I'll send it to you. But there's a lot of really useful information in there. The second thing I brought was a letter that Bob Mangalusi and I sent to CBD Kratom about a week ago. We were contacted by jail about this town hall, and we learned that CBD Kratom was trying to open a store here. And so we sent an incredibly aggressive letter to CBD Kratom, letting them know that if they should open their doors and the foreseeable harm to this community were to occur, we would be there to hold them accountable. So anybody that wants a copy of that letter as well, you can take one. Thank you.
It's nice to see so many people here. This is, I, let me first say, what I'm going to talk to you about is a personal, a personal issue in my family. My husband and I lost our daughter to a substance that was synthetically made, was not kratom. It was something called three-methylpentanol. There is no medical reason or usage for three-methylpentanol. It's not tested on animals because everyone knows what the outcome will make. John and Jill invited me to come talk to you about what my family has gone through and what has come out of it. And we host my daughter's transition. We spent two years going through the court system in Chester County. We were successful. It was one of the most stringent, most severe sentences in Chester County to date. The defendant will be in prison for a very long time. But it's, from a personal standpoint, this prompted me to speak out more about people who struggle with substance use disorder. And to really begin, as soon as I could, a child's life. And so I talked to state representatives when they let me in their office, and I go to Harrisburg and try to tell anyone who will listen to me about the dangers of analges and synthetically-produced fentanyl. I think that most people in Harrisburg get it now. Whether or not they're moving fast enough for me to possibly save another life is a totally different situation. They're not. But my, my past position, I was a victim's advocate in Chester County, and I worked many, many child cases of abuse and neglect and physical violence. And seeing the way those children dealt with their trauma really scared me to death. Because these are the kids who have been traumatized and are trying to self-medicate. Our daughter was raped, and it was something that she never got over. And I deal, and I talk to kids all the time, and they, this is something that they can grow around it, but it's still there. And that pain stays in them. And for kids that don't maybe are, live in underserved, under-resourced communities to go into a store, into a corner store, I just read something that was put out by Children's Hospital today about a little girl who went into a corner store in Philadelphia. She got her a Little Rice Krispie treat, and that's what she thought it was. She went home, she ate it, and she was affected by delta-8. Well, it was put on the package really small, and whoever was with this little girl, they didn't see it. And then the little girl eats it, and she has to be rushed to the hospital. This is, kratom and delta-8 are just another, it's, listen, it's hard enough to have preteens, teens. There's so much peer pressure on them to use, and even as parents, we think we know every trauma that they've been through. Believe me, you don't know. You don't know. And you don't want to risk any other substance in your community. In our case, it was brought to us. It was brought right to our doorstep. But to think that your child can go out to the old Starbucks and get a substance that makes them feel a little bit better if they don't have a great home life or if something really traumatic has happened to them, it's too much of a risk to take. And I think that, and I agree, you know, adults can certainly do what they want to. But I don't think that right now with the opioid explosion, that kids need another choice. Just, and they don't realize, they don't, they don't realize that, you know, and even if you tell them that you could get addicted to it, no, they won't believe it. And it's just, it's so important, you know, we think because my husband and I live in a nice neighborhood, Wayne is a nice neighborhood. No, you like to think Kensington, that's what all those people look like. There's people right now in this community that are struggling. And if we can limit things that exposure to anything else that is going to harm our kids, they're going through enough right now. I work with psychologists every day. I have 40, 40 some psychologists, therapists throughout Chester County that I work with. And I hear all the time that these kids come in, they're smoking weed, and, but there's all these other substances in the weed, and they, and these kids don't even know until the parents have had enough and they drugged us some, and then it's, they say, oh, no, I'm not doing opiates. But there is, because it's in everything. And this is just, this is just one more thing. And these kids, they have a, post-COVID, they've had a really tough time. So I was, I was really thrilled to, you know, come and tell you a little bit about my story and also to tell you about this, the project of a child's life, being able to get kids into, I think of it as a drug prevention program, being able to get children into mental health support and treatment as soon as possible, as soon as they start showing little red flags. Because we don't want, you don't want, as my daughter, who went through her trauma, and we saw the, what happened with that. You don't want that to happen. No one, no one wants that to happen to their child. And so I think that, I think it's great that you're all here as a community to do this, and I think you're probably going to be really successful. So thank you, I appreciate your attention.
A hundred and five, wait two hours, and another five, go to 10. That thing says 500 milligrams. Be very easy for a three-year-old to find that on the kitchen counter, tear that open and eat it. And so, you know, I was very interested to hear our attorney talk about his efforts, and we hear about legislators and things, but there's a lot that we can do to protect our children, especially if there's a store, right? We shouldn't be selling things in packages like that. We should have clear dose sizes, we should know exactly what's in there. The other crazy thing, right, it was mentioned a little bit earlier, but if I buy some acetaminophen, right, that's a little pain reliever that comes in a couple of brand names you probably know better, if I buy it here and I buy it in California, it's the exact same thing. If I want to prescribe this for an oxacillin for your child's ear infection, you buy it here and you buy it in Wisconsin, it's exactly the same thing. If you go in to try to buy some delta-8 THC, try to buy some kratom, you buy it here and you buy it down the street, who knows what's in either of them, right? And that's the thing that's the scariest for me. So I'm going to limit it to that, and I appreciate all the stories. Thank you.
Physical medicine and rehab physician, and I focus on pain management. And I also have a background in public health. And I think this is a great gathering to talk about something that we don't know a lot about, specifically when it comes to safety. And then in public health, they get us to have this thing, Kratom, in our head, and that is the definition of public health. So public health is anything that affects a lot of people, and it costs a lot of money, and it's preventable. Okay? So a lot of things on public health issues. There's a lot of things, addiction, all of this stuff we're talking about here, that affects a lot of people, it costs a lot of money, and majority of the time, it's preventable. So I think in this contest, we've talked about the pharmacology, most of you have been exposed to how this specific compound, specifically kratom, works. And we don't have a lot about safety. We have a lot, we don't have a lot about efficacy, I think everybody I've talked about, the fact that we don't have any clinical research that really shows that this is effective. But the thing that makes this a little bit scary is the fact that people have access to this without any control, without any regulations. And as we know, the environment is the invisible hand of behavior change, of the invisible hand of behavior. So basically, if you, if you plant such a shop in your environment, it's definitely going to influence how people behave. And one of the things that I think is also important is looking at this particular compound, there's a lot of information about how it's really helping people with the addiction, the stress. So there's a lot of information there to support its use in specific patient populations. But we have to look at, in this contest, in this environment, having kids being so close to this compound. And the other issue that's also significant is the fact that, from a toxicologist's standpoint, you can't really test unless you have special testing processes. This is not something that you can find on a drug test, or you can screen for a drug test, and kratom is not going to show up. So I think what I would like to just share with you, I know I've got a lot of information, but for you to really, as a parent, I have kids, so I care about business, and to kind of know some of the potential withdrawal symptoms. So kratom can cause a lot of psychological, as well as physiological, or physical symptoms with withdrawal. So kids can get irritable, they can have insomnia, they can start developing muscle pain, and all of those things. So I think having a sense of what those things are would be helpful as a parent, or as individuals or educators, because information is out there. I mean, kids have access to all this information now, and there's a lot of misinformation out there. So I think it helps to, all of us here to educate ourselves, and also have policies in place that prevent some of these things from happening. So I think, and hopefully I've just introduced some of this. Thank you.
So I'm really very excited that you're all here tonight, because this bill got very little attention in the House. I'm a prime sponsor on this bill, and I have a couple co-sponsors, and they're both here tonight, Chris Quinn and Jenna Marra, but no one was really interested in this. So I'm very happy to see you all are very concerned. I was very concerned when I first heard about kratom, and this bill was brought to me from a former legislator from New York. And I was like, I don't even know what kratom is. And he said, just do a little research, do a little data research. Okay. Then he said, go to your corner store. Okay. And I stay in downtown Harrisburg, so I went to the little convenience store around the corner, simply schedule it, and sure enough, it's right there. Had no idea. No age limit, no dosing requirements, nothing. Anybody could have bought it. So that really got me going on this bill. And I will tell you, before I tell you the specifics of the bill, I'll tell you where it is right now. It's been assigned to Health Committee, and the executive director sent it out to stakeholders for some input, and I've gotten a lot of input, let me take a, a lot of input from stakeholders. And this is a beginning bill, and I don't know if you know how the process works, but it'll go before the Health Committee, we'll have discussion, we'll vote on it, and there may be amendments, and already I have a couple amendments from our discussions tonight. But this is a first step at putting guardrails and protecting our children. And that's the most important thing to me, is our children. When you can go into a store and buy a Krispy Kreme or a candy bar that looks like it's an everyday product that a child could have, that's wrong. You're marketing a drug that you have no idea about to children. And, you know, you can tell me all day long that this is for anxiety, and this is for PTSD, and this is for pain management. This is about money. Let's be real here, this is all about money. This is not about solving your problems. This is about someone getting rich. So keep that in mind as I go through this bill. So what this bill does is it, basically, the first thing it does, you can't mix the product. And why is that important? We've seen some kratom products mixed with Ajax. I don't know about EBIT, I don't want to take Ajax. So the product cannot be mixed with a non-kratom substance. It goes on to say that it cannot contain anything poisonous, or anything that's controlled, morphine, demerol, heroin, I don't know, my drug categories are lacking, I apologize. Additionally, it cannot be mixed with anything that would bring the residual solvents higher than the standards in the pharmacology regulation. Apparently, that's a thing. I didn't know that was a thing, that you could make synthetic to go with organic, and that gives you a higher potency. Additionally, they put a limit on how much potency kratom can have. It has to include adequate labeling necessary for the safe and effective use by a consumer of the kratom product. Me and the drafting attorney went around and around, I'm not an attorney, I'll tell you right now, I'm a helicopter pilot, so I need, really make pictures, really small words. And I said, what does that mean? Oh, that just paves the way. It puts the bumpers on the car. Okay, well, who's going to determine that? And that doubles in the details. Well, the Health Department's going to determine that. And something that was brought up to me in the 51 phone calls that I received since Monday on this bill, was we want to see the font size in this bill. We want the font size to be such that a 55-year-old woman can read it without her glasses. I thought that was a great idea. We don't want to see it small, we need it really big. Recommended serving size. That's important. No one under the age of 21 can purchase any product with kratom in it, under any circumstances. Additionally, there are penalties, monetary penalties for violations of this. We do not, at this point, have criminal penalties, but that has been brought up. Tonight, one of the moms asked me if I was open to adding a amendment to restrict the placement of a business near a school. I'm all for that. In Florida, you can't be under the age of 21 and go into a shop that sells kratom after school till eight o'clock at night. I think that's also a valid amendment to look at. If you make it hard for kids, that's the first step. But I think an important part of this bill that is not in this bill, we need to educate our children. We need to have those ugly conversations about what happens to young kids that take this drug because he's got a little anxiety, and his brain's not fully formed, and doesn't, you know, he doesn't know what he's taking. It's important that we, as a community, start with our children. I'm not sure that this bill, we develop, I would have told you my bill would die in committee. If you want to get involved and see this across the finish line, don't call me. Please don't call me. I'm already the sponsor. I'm already 100% behind the bill. But you need to call my leadership, you need to call Kerry Benninghoff, you need to call Brian Cutler, you need to call the ED of the Health Committee, who's Kathy Rapp, and you need to ask her to run my bill. You need to ask her to get it on the floor for a vote. We don't have time to have another study. If children can access this drug now, how many more kids have to die before we do something about it? Thank you.
Have any questions about anything, to fill any of our guests? I'll be happy to come down in if you'd like, and I'll take questions. I'll come down.
How much is it? Like, how much is like a diet of kratom? What are we looking at? Is this in an affluent area, people have access to money? I feel like, you know, it's like a perfect spot, it's actually cool. I could find out, I'd be welcome if Wayne had to school, how much is something like...
How much was that bag, repeated by...
No, I can answer that. I went on the website, and it's $10 for eight pills. Eight pills, a day stone, we watched the Joe Rogan clip, we posted on Bad and Advancement Coalition. So for less than a trip to Wawa, you could buy eight pills. And for $110, you get a full class stone for 20 days.
Well, one of...
I was asked, I was asked how much that treat is, I asked around, it was about $30, which is expensive, but the rents in the mall are high, you'd get it for much cheaper.
Yeah, the corner store's a lot cheaper.
One of the things that personally had concerned me was that someone 18 years old or 21 could go to that particular location, buy as much as she wanted to buy, and walk up the street to the corner where St. Mary's Episcopal Church is, and then sell it at profit. That's one of the things we saw drug dealers doing in Kensington. So that's a big concern for me, and then it places an additional burden on the Radnor Police Department. That's just my observation. Any other questions? Any, yes, ma'am? Can I give you the microphone?
Well, I'm trying to get it. I don't know if this is the right form, but I was wondering how the back door even that, you know, how did it get to this point with no comment, no, you know, a sign at the top of the wall? How does that happen?
Well, I'm not the person to answer about that. I'm a filmmaker, and I don't know anything about those other things, I'm sorry. Yes? Third Ward Commissioner Anne Marie Jones.
The township had no idea that this shop was opening. They evaded permits, they do not have a CO, and the day that they opened, we shut them down, township shut them down. They worked literally in the dark of night.
Because they can reopen, we shut them down, we're all about it.
So we've shut them down, and, you know, they do have to go through the proper permitting and go before the design review board to open. But, you know, yeah, until we can get some ordinances or policies in place where they can't be within 1,000 feet of a school, there's nothing we can really do if they...
Do the township commissioners have any impetus to just ban it from Radnor?
Well, once again, it's very hard to create a ban in a township if we don't have a ban at the state level, so, you know...
Why, because they, you know, want to ban it within 1,000 yards of church or school?
That's something we're looking at. We're considering everything that we can, but right now, we have to, you know...
You could say, if you can't ban it from Radnor, if the police are going to come and sue you in the state courts, we're going to war.
Well, you know, this is legal, and I'm not here to represent our solicitor. So I can't, I can't talk to how that will happen legally, but we are doing what we can behind the scenes to, to see this through legally. So that's all I can say for now.
Yes, sir, you want...
Okay, if, if we can't ban it right now because we lack the legal framework to do that, can we limit the hours, tax it, have them create liability, you know, expansion, make them get a bond in order to sell it? You know, limit the hours so it's not, it's only limited hours that they can sell it, or they can't be within, as close to a school as many people have suggested. One of the difficulties, by the way, is that right down the road on Lancaster Avenue in Bryn Mawr is a smoke shop that sells it. So, I mean, this is a bigger thing than Radnor, we need to really get this handled at the state level. But in the meantime, are there things that we can do if we can't ban it?
Well, again, I can't speak on that, I'm not qualified to speak on that. However, I think Attorney Jordan said that he and his firm, if you don't mind me saying, Magalusi and his firm had written a very stern letter to the owner or the company.
Yeah, we wrote a letter directly to CBD Kratom, they're based out of Missouri. And, you know, the problem that you have is that because it is, it is not banned statewide because it's legal, you're going to run into an issue with free enterprise. I mean, there's no real mechanism to tell a store, unless it's illegal, that they can't operate the certain area. And so that's one of the biggest issues with kratom, is how widely available it is. And if it's not at a store like CBD Kratom, you go to gas stations, it's there. You go to, you know, little corner shops, it's there. It doesn't have to be just a purely CBD Kratom store, you can find it anywhere. And so it's more of an industry-wide issue than it is, you know, one or two stores here and there, because at this point, it's available everywhere.
Hi, Tracy, what is the chance that your bill could be, go through the House and then go through the Senate and be approved within a year, if there was widespread support and outpouring?
That helps. That absolutely does help, and if the last...
Are you talking a year, or are you talking two years, or three years?
Well, it would have to be out of the House and over to the Senate, because our session ends November 30th, and then everything starts all over again. I got to tell you, if the last four days are any indication, there's a lot of momentum. It's definitely growing. People are very concerned about children getting hold of this product.
Tracy, that's what I wanted to ask. Why are they working to make the age limit 21 if that one has been banned completely?
Yeah. I'm sitting next to a guy, and I just want to die for a K-12. He thinks, I'm sitting next to a guy, and he wants to die from it, he's still having a need for people over 25, man, it's crazy.
Given the fact that I knew very little about kratom and had got very little support in the House so far for this, when I looked at this, I thought it was a good place to start, because I, there are no studies, there's very little real data behind this product. And it's very difficult to get an all-out ban. I think that would be almost impossible.
Right, there's, and also, there's thousands of children and young adults that have already died.
I agree. I absolutely agree with you, which is why I have this bill. Is it perfect? No. But it's a great first step.
Right, but if it goes through the law, it's stuck in the store.
Well, and we talked earlier about... Sorry.
Hey, guys, we're not here to shout at our...
No, I'm not shouting. We're not here to support this. We're not here to... 21 is a gray age, maybe 18 is the age. This is a product that we just, if you're an adult, you can go to war, and you can shoot a gun, that's your decision to do what you want. But what we're here about is about the kids, somewhere between 10 and 18 years old. That's really the fact.
They're not supposed to sell it anyway.
So once again...
If you're ready.
Sorry, Ken. Just so, to reiterate what Tracy said before, there was a ban in place, was it last year? And there wasn't enough support, or bill to ban it.
Yes, it was two years ago.
Two years ago. And there wasn't enough support. So the whole point of being here tonight is to rally that support. You should be contacting, there's... You should be contacting, there's a list out back, I hope that everyone took one, of representatives and state senators that you should be calling. And once again, it shouldn't be Tracy because she's starting this. It shouldn't be Jennifer O'Meara or Chris Quinn because they're already co-sponsors of this bill. It should be the other, it should be the majority leader, it should be the House Speaker, it should be the state senators. You don't have to live in someone's district to call. You can also encourage family members who might live in other state senators' districts to make phone calls. So we need to make this a rallying cry if you want to get something changed. We don't come and yell at people, but we start advocating for the things that we need to be done.
I'll get all the questions.
Do we have all the names of the people that we should be sending our letters to to contact this, or is there more people?
Kathy Rapp is missing, the chair of the Health Committee, but all the other ones are on there.
Kathy who?
Kathy Rapp, R-A-P-P. She'll be the one that actually decides if the bill runs out of the committee.
I wanted to make a quick comment to all of those things. I'm not in policy or politics, but I think we have to understand that this is something that there were some data showing how bad it is for a lot of people. This was presented to the federal government, DEA, and there is 5 million people who are using Kratom in America who, when the other man advocated to make sure that DEA doesn't think this is scheduled one. So this is not going to be easy. There's other sides to the story. So I think all of that has to be considered. And ultimately, I think education to young people, you know, so we can push for the policy, but we also have to really try to educate our people and what can we do in schools or even other places to make sure that, you know, eventually it's going to be money, like you said. Who has the most money is my room. So just wanted to add that.
My name is Sean Tomarano. I'd like to hear from another woman of you. I've been consuming Kratom for seven years. I'm in the United States to make me better, and I got addicted afterwards. Seven years ago, before I started Kratom, I was a people up on a string in Kensington. I am all for regulation of this, and we have been trying to get it done for a number of years now. Me, along with many of my peers, Kratom has helped. And not all of us are addicts. There's a lot of older people who have chronic pain, endometriosis, fibromyalgia, cancer, people are dying of cancer, and the pain meds aren't helping, but the Kratom is. I don't want to see it in the children's hands either. I don't want to see it next to a school, and I'm mad to see CBD Kratom did this because now it makes every Kratom consumer look like they don't care about health and well-being with the people in the town. And I think it's a great idea. Get it away from the churches, get it away from the schools, get it away from the Red Centers. I agree with all that, but to take it away from everybody, because like I said, I've taken this for seven years, I'm married now, I haven't been to prison in eight years, I paid taxes. So for some of us, it's very important that it is helping. And yes, it does touch the opioid receptors, just like the doctor said, there is a drug that... But it doesn't latch on to them, it tickles it. And for a kid, that's going to be a problem, and that's going to introduce them to opioids. But for somebody who has an issue with opioids, it's keeping us away from stuff such as fentanyl and pain pills. So I hope that you guys will all keep an open mind and consider adding in the amendments that Mrs. Pantrick said, talked about, keeping it away from the schools. And I hope that you guys do have success because they're here for money. Because Kratom doesn't even cost that much. They're here purely for money and for nothing else. Thank you.
So obviously, I understand the issue of proximity to our schools and the lack of regulation. But my concern is that for those who are using Kratom as a means of getting off of heroin, is it possible that even while unregulated, it could still be saving lives?
Sure, I think absolutely it's possible, but the risk associated with Kratom right now is that there's so much unknown about it. There's literally not one single randomized trial, peer-reviewed study demonstrating the efficacy of it in any context, whether it's getting them off of heroin or anything else. And so very, you know, sure, there are a lot of people out there, there's a lot of testimonials where, like some of the people here tonight, it has done a lot of good in their life, but it also does a lot of harm to other people who take it without the knowledge of knowing exactly what it's going to do for them or to them. And the lack of knowledge in the industry as a whole is really what's dangerous. And so, you know, like I said, when adults want to make informed, educated decisions, they're going to do it, but they need to be given the information in order to do just that. And when you're a child, it doesn't matter how much information you get. There are some decisions that children should just not make ever, and taking a substance like this is certainly one of them. So I think that you're right, there are certainly people that it has helped, but as a whole, it is still so unexplored and unknown in terms of the science and the medicine that it has a lot of risk and a lot of potential for danger, for misuse, for abuse. And a lot of people that are under the misconception, like my client was, that it's just like a cup of coffee. And that's something that his parents said, that he always said, is that he was under the misconception that it's as safe as a cup of coffee, but it killed him. So, you know, the issue here is the lack of knowledge, the lack of information, and the lack of warnings that don't give the consumers what they need to protect themselves.
As somebody who's purchased opioids from pharmacies before, I've definitely felt concerned about the prevalence of just things like CVS and Walgreens in our communities even. And it does seem like a bit of a double standard with how alarmists are treating this issue in some ways.
I appreciate your thoughts on that topic. If you go to CVS, I don't think you can buy oxycodone in a gummy worm. And I think that when you buy five-polligammon oxycodone, you know it's five-polligammon oxycodone. You don't guess, could it be two? Could it be 30? I'm not really sure, right? And I think that's been a big crux of what I understand this group has really been facing now. And for people that anything brings help to, I wish them the best on that and love hearing those stories. Thank you for sharing, everybody.
Hi, my name is Courtney Smith, and I am an RN BSN. I also do a two-year fellowship at Bryn Mawr Hospital in Pain and Pile care. I currently serve as the nurse manager at a recovery center in America. And everything that I'm hearing is very alarming to me. Kratom came to my attention one year ago when we started getting people coming off of it in our staff. Let me tell you something. First and foremost, I want to tell you this. How many of you know how long it takes to get addicted to an opiate? And I'm going to treat it like an opiate because it serves the same receptors. How many of you know? How many days? Three. Three days. Three days or over, you take that, and you're dependent, even if you're not an addict. Okay? And addiction is a disease. You either have it or you don't. But either way, you don't need to have the disease of addiction to become dependent. You understand the difference? Okay? So then, what are we dealing with? Do you want your child on that? And when you're looking at Kratom specifically, okay, you're looking at two things. And one form, it's going to serve to be like speed, like code, like crack. And another form, it's going to serve like a depressant, an opiate. Right? So you have, one, a drug that's not regulated that's serving two forms of a hobby. That is very dangerous to our community of people in recovery, first and foremost. Could it serve, yeah, like Suboxone or whatever, or it's filling a receptor, and it could be helpful. With enough study, sure. I'm not playing with the unknown. What I'm playing with is what I see coming through my door. Right? And what I see coming through my door is a drug that's not regulated, and I'm having to give people opiates who never had an opiate in their system just to come off the deal and stuff. You understand that? I'm going to give you methadone, and I'm going to give you Suboxone or Subitex to come off of Kratom, and I'm going to watch you come off of it for about three weeks. And it's going to be horrible, worse than some of my heroin users. So let me tell you something. For it to come in that packet or anything similar, my thing is, okay, yeah, we can't pass it overnight because you know what this reminds me of when you guys talk about this? I've been a nurse a long time. I know I'm not lucky, but I have. I'm going to date myself back into the early, early 2000s, and I worked at Fox Chase Cancer Center. And I was around for what we like to refer to as the United States of Amnesia when Big Farm was telling us as nurses that opiates were not addictive. If you just take it properly, only 1% of you will ever get addicted. We got a lot of blood on our hands today. Right? So I'm feeling like really passionate about this right at this minute. So if you hear a little bit of nerves in my voice, that's why. I just happened to be invited here by my good friend Karen, who's also a nurse that works with me and is an advocate as well. And, you know, when you talk about this, I love, first of all, Tracy, what you're doing because I think it's, hey, we're talking about not being like, oh, we're going to get firework. You're talking about a movement. It takes time. So what does a movement look like? We're going to see what we know. We're going to increase education in the community. We're going to get the word out there. We're going to support Tracy. Right? We're going to support, you know, our doctors. We're going to educate each other. Right? That's what that looks like. Right? So I always say, like, for a long time, I ran conferences, I'm an author as well, and I'd say, if you come to my conference and you leave here, and you're just like, "Oh, good job, Courtney," but you go out in the community and do nothing, I didn't do any job. I did not do my job. And I think that that's what they're doing here today. They're saying, "Let's get a movement going." There's many people in here that have shared different stories and vested interests that are here, and I think even for myself, like, I feel more passionate just by being here. And I work in fields. You know, I said to somebody earlier, I don't care what my background is, you know something I know, period. You have a story I don't, you have an experience I don't. And so if we could just come in with a voice of humility, meaning I'm not better than you, you're not better than me, and just hear each other, we could definitely make more of a difference. So I think for me, I just felt very passionate about the need to say something, but also just to point out that three-day thing. So when they're saying, "We don't have you here," yeah, she's going to spend a year or two years, sure, but in the meantime, you understand how important it is to do something about it? I really appreciate you being in recovery, speeding up, saying, "Hey, I still, it's helpful to me, but I realize that may not be the keys." You know, I mean, even with like Suboxone, different things. When you're an addict, you confuse anything if you're not living a life in recovery. And our children, what do they know? I don't want to educate you on the other side of recovery. I want to educate you before it so you don't have to be in recovery. How about that?
You just didn't decide. I was part of Ruth this last week. It's been aggressively looking at this issue from the board meeting we had on Monday, including Mary Beth Doyle and Anne Marie Jones and a few others. You can raise your hands. So I decided to get real and really try to grab what the stuff was. So I gave one shot, and I went down to the shop in Bryn Mawr. I bought myself some Delta 8, sort of a little thing like this for $6. Then I used some Kratom for $16. For $16, excuse me. I'm still trying to get reimbursement in the crowd, but they're not giving to me. Anyway, so I was looking at this can. It shows you how really dangerous this is as far as labeling goes. What it says is, which I find quite fascinating, by the way, an undergraduate degree in pharmacology, I have a PhD in pharmacology, so I'm really fascinated by this. "The U.S. Food Drug Administration has not yet approved this product for human consumption." That's what it says on here. And the product itself, and I didn't really open this until I shared this with Ken and his wife were here, and I got curious myself. If you open this, it's exciting, huh? Think something will pop me off. If you open this, what you see is a powder. It's a powder. How much of this powder are you supposed to use? Is it a pinch? Is it a double pinch? Is it a teaspoonful? No dosing recommendations. Ben! No, what it tells you is that it's 40 grams here. So how are you going to partial this out? Now, maybe kids that are using this understand, you might know how much you're supposed to use. And but for a kid who gets a hold of this, who's 16, 17 years old or younger, they're not going to know what to do with a product like this. In addition, there's a barcode on here for additional information. So I took my iPhone, put it on here, and what comes up is a site, and it has a little box that's put in the lot number. I can't find the lot number on here. I tried every number that's on here, and nothing came up on the site. So I have no idea what else I'm trying to share with this. Now, there's a phone number on here if you want to call. I didn't go that far. I mean, I went far, but I had to go right there to make the phone home. So this is what they're really dealing with. Now, the store in Bryn Mawr was kind enough, when I went in there, I actually shared with him my concern. I talked about the store opening in Devon. And he was kind enough to share with me, this is a relatively small part of the sales. The Delta 8 and the Kratom are relatively a small part of his sales. Apparently, the store is opening up. It's so blatant in Devon. I think it's Devon, is that right? In Wayne, where the... What I say, I'm not sure, and my hairstyle is up there too, so I know the shopping center. I know, I know it's there. But I don't know where I'm going. I just drive there, I've been there for like 20 some years. Anyway, they shared with me that, they call there's a smoke shop. So the smoke shop is not quite as overt. Now, the store is opening up, clearly states, what does it say? It says, "Crighton and CBD," was it? CBD, right? CBD is a form, it's really a form of tetrahydrocannabinol, but it's less than 0.5, less than 0.3%, that's the way to differentiate. It's 0.3, less than 0.3, more than 0.3, more than 0.3. 0.3 is marijuana, and then below that is a CBD, that's kind of the way the fishing goes. Which is kind of interesting. That's what we learned this week, did all this research. So that's really the problem. This is really not labeled properly. Now, I don't know how you label this, take one teaspoonful, two teaspoonful, but this is part and core we're dealing with. The kid gets a hold of this. Now, what they told me, that's right, what they told me was that they sell to only somebody 21 and over. Now, the store on the open is claiming they won't sell to anybody 18 or a younger. They won't sell, that's what I think they're trying to share with you. But the store in Bryn Mawr said, since they're selling other products that are 21, they will not sell to anybody that's 20, that's left under 21. And then they actually have a scan which scans your, gets your driver's license and other type of identification. So that's some of the things we're dealing with, the store is opening. It's so blatant, not going in a smoke shop, but clearly stating what they're selling is a big problem that we're also dealing with too. I don't know if all the stores do that because I've never seen other stores. Is that what they're labeled? Is that the way other stores are labeled? They say CBD and Crighton. Is that the way their store is labeled? Because it's written right across, that's the way. It's not called a smoke shop. It's actually, okay, so nobody knows. But, you know, it's one thing to call it a smoke shop, and another thing to actually blatantly state what it is.
CBD Kratom is the only one that says CBD Kratom.
And is that one every store that they have?
Yes.
Okay. And I was not aware of that. It's kind of interesting. And with the big marijuana, too. Yeah. Right, yeah. Anyway, so that's just an update. I went shopping, and I'm still not being reimbursed, but I really found it interesting to do that and talk to the fellow and share some thoughts with him. And he is also very concerned. He said to me that it should not be near his school, and he was also very concerned about that, too. So that's a few thoughts, I hope that's helpful. And I have some here.
By the way, nobody eat that one that I threw around, okay? And I wouldn't mind getting it back.
So I just had a quick question, kind of about the bill, because I'm not sure, I don't know the ins and outs of what you can put in a bill or not put in a bill, but I'm a former opioid addict, not on opiates anymore. I've gone through multiple surgeries, haven't needed it, haven't needed Kratom or CBD or anything like that. But I can say that when I was growing up, these companies are always going to exist, whether it's Kratom, or CBD, or Spice, or K2... whether it's kratom, or CBD, or Spice, or K2, the kids are going to find a way to get their hands on it. I don't ever see that stopping. But something that I noticed was, and I hate to say, the children and the kids have to suffer the consequences of bigger companies going after money, but one of the biggest things that I saw was, when you're growing up, if you were suffering consequences, that's, that was the deterrent. And I know in the opiate world now, if you're selling opiates, and it's leased with fentanyl, and somebody overdoses from that, you're going to jail. If you get caught for that, you're responsible for the death of that person. I don't think those extremes would be needed in a kratom case per se, but somebody asked the question earlier about the price of this stuff. Well, the price goes up if you, if you set the age of 21, and kids under the age of 18 can't get it anymore, they're going to get it, and the ones that do get it are going to upsell it to the other kids in the high school, and they're going to be making, the bad apples are going to be making a profit in the high schools, selling it to the other kids that don't have the access to it. So, is there any way, kind of within that bill, to address, you know, if you're underage of a person that can legally purchase this, and it is found out that you are also supplying it, that there are secondary effects to that, I guess was my question. Like, can you add something like that to a bill, to the bill that you're proposing, where it's, it goes beyond, like, you just have to be 21? If you're under 21 and you're resupplying it to other people under 21, because then that could be a deterrent for just kids using it. I mean, that's how, that's how it might.
That would be the same as alcohol, selling alcohol to a minor. It would be under the criminal code.
Well, because unregulated would...
Well, right now, right. In this bill, because it specifically states, under 21, I would think, he's not that kind of aware, it would go under the criminal code, once this bill was signed into law.
Last question. You guys decided what to ask.
I have one more question.
Thank you. Similarly, my concern is how this is not a regulated substance, how are they disposing it? So, what would some of our children, you know, being in the parking lot, or like in a dumpster, or trash can, so maybe in your building, if it's regulated, how are they disposing up and down in their store?
Actually, I've never thought about that.
Yeah. Because our case, you know, it's like, who is dumb? So, that's my...
My question is, why do we change this happening? Do you know that everybody uses this? I mean, half their babies are supposed to be looking like a cereal box. Can we make this product have to come in a little white bottle with a red lid, like a safety lid, just like your aspirin, your Tylenol? I mean, they are marketing it to the kids, just like they did the, you know, the vape pen. They go after the kids, and they get addicted young, and then they keep on going. These people can show you examples of how they got started, but let's make sure it looks like medicine, rather than, oh, a cute little cereal box.
We can certainly add that as an amendment.
It's in gummy form, chocolate form, caramel form, like, there's no way that this isn't going to, there isn't going to be accidental consumption by kids, even adults, not knowing what, you know, somebody in their household might have stuck in the cabinet if it looks like candy. Dogs, I'm a veterinarian, I had a dog last week that ate 84, a whole bottle of gummies, 84 melatonin gummies. I mean, that's a big problem. But when things taste good, the whole argument of whether or not somebody has the right dose or not, it all goes out the window. That's why pills generally don't taste good. Pills are usually little white hard things, and you take them with water. It's not supposed to be like a dessert. This is ridiculous. Just, the whole thing's ridiculous.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, especially thank you for the support from the Radnor Township Commissioners. Thank you to our guests for coming out tonight. My time is up, and we thank you very much for your time.
Before we wrap up, I wanted to thank John Rautchudi and Jill Fretchie for sharing their amazing documentary, and for all of our speakers, and especially to Jill, I'm sorry, to Mary Beth, Mary Beth Doyle and Beth Monner for helping us to put this together tonight. You know, the four of you, Jill, John, Beth, Mary Beth, your hearts really are in an amazing place, and you guys want nothing to do. What I saw from working with you is that you want nothing more than to keep our community and our children safe. So, thank you so much. And lastly, I just want you to know that, you know, what the township is doing is evolving. You know, there's not much I can say right now, but it is evolving, I think in a positive way. And I invite you all to come to the next meeting on March 14th, to, you know, give public comment, to listen, and to see where we're headed. So, thank you all for coming tonight. I'm sorry, one more thing, one more thing, this is important. We have two schools that have written letters, the principal and the superintendent. Principal of St. Catherine's and also the superintendent of Radnor Township School District. So, please just hold on for one minute.
So, this one is from Ken Bachelor, Superintendent of Schools for Radnor Township. On behalf of Radnor Township School District, we write to express our concerns with the establishment of this shop at the former Starbucks location on Lincoln Stravaganon Way. While it is our understanding that it opened without following the proper permits process and has since been closed by the township pending further review, the presence of this store so close to our middle school and an area traveled by many school-aged students raises substantial alarm. We ask, in the interest of student health and safety, we ask that the township closely scrutinize this venture in its review. This is from Bud Tostie, Principal of St. Catherine of Siena School. I am sorry for my absence at tonight's meeting, as a family situation had to take precedence. As an educator for nearly 50 years, I have witnessed the tragic consequences of drug abuse by students as early as in their middle school years. I have also witnessed the incredibly sad impact it has had on their families. I have attended funerals of former students that I have taught who have fallen to the consequences of drug addiction. Regardless of whatever age requirement is needed, we cannot be naive enough to know that adolescents and teenagers will find a way around this. Throns of RMS students and St. Catherine's students, especially on Fridays, socialize in and around the center of Wayne. The proximity of this store provides a direct access for them to make poor choices. It is for these reasons I am vehemently opposed to the opening of this type of store in Wayne. Sincerely, Bud Tostie. Thank you, everyone.